I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, so thank you for being here tonight, everybody. I am going to be running the meeting until we have the election of officers, just to let everybody know why you're hearing from me. Um, right now, and the first thing we're gonna do is an approval of the agenda. I do have one request, and we would need a board vote to do, change the event agenda, is that there's a request to move the update on the Strong and Memorial Projects up to the first item um after after public comment, because we have some people here who have other arrangements tonight. So if somebody wouldn't mind making a motion to um, move that up in the agenda to uh between five and six, it would go.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just have one discussion point on the agenda.
Yeah.
Could we also just, while we're in the discussion mode, can we just explain for the public why there is the executive session? I think just so there's, there's just some clarity on that, I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. Um, let's finish this vote first, and then I can explain if that's alright.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion on the uh change of the agenda? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, motion for the, so we will move that up. Um, just as a quick clarification on the agenda, the reasons for executive session are very few under the law. Um, and anything that has to do with the potential investigation of any employee or officer of the school district is slated to be in executive session. Um, so we are following the law by having a discussion about whether or not there will be an investigation into the conduct of a board member uh during that time. It is not open to the public. Alright, uh, the next order of business when we go into the election of officers is the first thing that the board will need to do is to officially accept the resignation of Lindsay Dahlheimer as Chair of the Board. We would need a motion to accept that resignation. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then we need to move into the election of a new chair, um, and we will take a motion for a new board chair.
Uh, I would like to nominate Bob Moore as a board chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Um, sorry, I do have just, I think kind of one point to, I think, just really make. Um, I think we could probably all agree at this table that we probably all want nothing more than to move forward in our community and really kind of be that face and voice of change. Um, and I think maybe because I'm the, I guess, newer board member. Um, I think it's nothing against Bob at all. I mean, I was previously served on the board with Bob. You know, clearly extremely knowledgeable, I have no question about the duties of the job, I'm just, oh. Is there any kind of discussion point of like? We're obviously at this crossroads um right now, and I'm just, you know, again, just kind of being mindful of the community impact and and their view.
I'm not, I mean, so we, the, the, the motions on the table right now are to elect a chair. That has to happen, board, board business to go forward.
I understand.
There's gonna be a complete reorganization with election, with elected officials in December.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, so the chair that is elected now will be elected until the December meeting.
I understand that.
Um, and I, I, I'm not sure if your questions address to me or to the entire board.
Or just like, more of like a statement, just out there for like everybody, because again, I think it's, I'm just trying to be mindful. Obviously, there's been a lot of spotlight recently on the board. And I'm just trying to, I always say, like, take the people out of it and just look at the situation. Um, and that's kind of where I'm just trying to simply like reflect of, okay, you know, how are we going to move forward?
Point of order on relevance?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure, I think that's what I was asking is just, did that have anything to do with the nomination of Bob as board chair? I mean, I know, I understand the point that you're trying to make about a direction, but we have to address that particular motion and second right now.
I, I would agree with you though, but I know what you're saying. Um, so can we have more than one person brought up? I mean, is it just one?
Yeah, you can nominate whoever you want, except the way that it works is there's a motion and a second on the table, right? And then you can vote on that, and then if the vote fails, then you can bring up another name for a nomination.
Okay.
I, I mean, so that's fine if we wanna move forward with it. Like I said, I'm just really just trying to be like, trying to be the voice of our, some very, you know, strong community members. That's what we were elected to do, so.
So we can't have two? Like, i- i- if, and I don't know, look, Robert's rules, I got nothing. Um, but it, it feels like, and that's kind of just like a race to, to hit the, if you nominate first, then we vote on that first.
Right.
And then we don't have another person who may be interested who then puts, can put their name in, because we've already.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, again, I don't know how it works, but.
So the, the question, the thing, you can, you can do two things at this point right now, okay? You can um ask Lucy to take back that nomination, to open it up for more discussion and see if anybody else is interested in a name and putting themselves forward or somebody else. If you move forward with a nomination and a second, and you would vote on it, the, the concept would be that if that vote fails, it means that the board has a different direction that they wanna go in, right? And then another name would come up.
Okay.
What we have done in, what we have done in the past is when the nomination has been put out, it's been voted on.
Mm-hmm.
And if it doesn't pass, then.
Yep.
Someone else.
Right. Because then the, the board has spoken as to how they feel about.
But what if the board doesn't know who else is interested? I mean, then we would have maybe more of a, okay, who at this point in our juncture do we feel like would maybe bring us more forward, or who do we think that the community may um look at as like freshly wise? Like, how do, we wouldn't know unless we know, like, if there's someone else who is interested. We haven't even asked if anyone else is interested.
Well, you're in the discussion period right now, you can say if somebody.
I mean, I know I'm not interested.
You can talk about, you can talk about if somebody else is interested, what you can't do is make another nomination right now, because there's a nomination and a second on the table.
Is somebody else interested on the board?
I mean, I would do it until December, um, you know, if, like, we needed more volunteers, you know? I'm happy to, um. But, you know, kind of, I understand the process at play.
Is there any other interest? Okay, so we know where the interest is, there is a nomination and a second on the table, we've had discussion. All in favor of Bob Moore being board chair? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Me.
Me.
I'll abstain.
So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, motion carries. Okay. Um, with that being board chair, what we also need, I'm gonna hand it over to Bob now as chair, but now since he was vice chair, we need to have an election for a vice chair.
I'll make a nomination. Uh, Dr. Darcy. Is there a second?
Second.
Huh?
Second.
I'll do the same thing. We have a motion and a second.
Discussion.
I, I.
Discussion.
Really? Anyone else want it?
There's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, and thank you for doing it. Anybody opposed?
Yeah, thanks. December.
Thank you, we now, um, thank you, uh, hopefully Laura and Christine, I will carry out what you were looking for.
Yeah, we don't have that, and again, on the.
I've done that before, so.
Yeah, nothing like we've many, said many times on here, it's nothing personal at all.
Yeah.
It's more of
I understand.
Starting fresh is more, is more with the direction I was hoping for.
Yeah. Alright, uh, we have a very nice presentation from Addie Buckeye, it's head of the, president of the senior class. And she's got a very interesting project, Addie.
Hello, everyone. My name is Addie Buckeye, and I'm going into my senior year at Kavich. As a Girl Scout, I've been given the opportunity to work toward earning my Gold Award. The Gold Award is the highest and most prestigious award in Girl Scouting. Last spring, when I began this project, I wanted to ensure that it would benefit the community at large. So I met with a number of people in our community to learn what challenges they were seeing and how I might be able to address them. Those conversations led me to speak tonight about a campaign recently launched by Durham Middlefield Youth and Family Services in collaboration with Paper House Productions. It is called the Nice or Nothing Than Something Kind Campaign. As part of my Gold Award, I will be collaborating with DMYFS on this campaign. The campaign focuses on creating a kindness coalition, teaching three healthy and effective communication skills for the community to use both online and in person. The, the three skills include I-statements, meta-moments, and active listening. When someone joins the coalition, they'll take a quick pre-survey, then watch three short videos about I-statements, meta-moments, and active listening. After about two months, we'll follow up with a post-survey to see if people are using what they learned and if it's making a difference. This evidence-based approach is a key part of both the DMYFS mission and my Gold Award requirements. There will be more resources and videos on the DMYFS website alongside social media posts on their Facebook and Instagram, reinforcing the skills. Last week, at the Durham Community Center, we executed a soft launch during National Night Out. We will continue to attend community events to promote the campaign. We're looking for ways to bring the campaign into our state thirteen. Some ideas include forming a team of kindness ambassadors. DMYFS Director Claudia White and I could join the ambassadors to lead in-person training on effective communication skills and recruit more people to the kindness coalition. We'd love to work with students, coaches, and other community members to show how valuable healthy communication can be. As we continue building the campaign, I'd love to hear your ideas or suggestions. Also, feel free to contact me or Claudia. Thank you for letting me share tonight.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
I just wanna make a comment that I had the pleasure of meeting with Addie on Monday morning, she made my week. Um, it was just such a great way to start, and I think that this is such a fantastic project, project. And I love everything that you're about to do, and I hope we can be part of it and help in any way. Um, we're all ready for kindness and better communication and building the community up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Now, we're ready for public comments, um. Just a couple notes, uh, after the last meeting, we had a lot of people here, another you know, testified or spoken before our public comment, and just wanna reiterate that this public comment here is to collect information, it's not, yeah, a public hearing, it's not a town meeting. It's information that's gathered, uh, the board listens and, and uses it in its deliberations over the next couple of years. In order to put some more order back in what happened, uh, we worked on a, uh, process for public comment, just for everybody to know what we're doing, so we can maximize the input of public comment. And Lucy will read that as a second.
A statement before the board meeting is public comment. This is based on our policy nine, three, two, seven. The board strongly believes in hearing from the public. We offer two public sessions at each meeting for this very purpose. It's critical that public input is a time for people to speak and for the board to listen. Therefore, we want to reiterate the following protocols. As a reminder, this is to ensure there's always an avenue for the board to hear your concerns. Everyone will listen respectfully during the time someone is speaking. As a reminder, each person speaking has three minutes. This is one three-minute time speaking, not a repeated three minutes among other speakers. When someone is speaking, there will be no interruptions by anyone else present at the meeting, either in person or online. Interruptions like words spoken, other noises, expressions, side conversations, and or commotion. A board member may interrupt if the content is violating any policies. There will be no profanity or inappropriate language. There will be no discussion of specific children or employees during public input. The board will engage in debate or respond to statements, will not, I'm sorry, the board will not engage in debate or respond to statements. The board may ask clarifying, clarifying questions or provide clarifying information. Board responses to public comments usually occur at future meetings or through other appropriate channels. When issues arise, one, if disruptions occur, the board chair or presiding officer at the time will issue a verbal warning. Number two, if disruptions continue, the board chair or presiding officer reserves the right to recommend the removal of individuals from the meeting. And anyone asked to leave the meeting may not return until the next meeting. Repeated meeting offenses may result in being banned from future meetings. Number three, anyone refusing to leave when requested may be subject to trespassing charges. Number four, any harassment or threatening behavior in the hallways or parking lot before or after the meeting will be reported to local law enforcement. Number five, if there are significant disruptions that prohibit the board from doing their work, any board member can ask the chairs or presenting officer to clear the room. If this happens, people may or may not be invited to return at the discretion of the chair. Media personnel, if not part of the disruption, are not required to leave the meeting.
Is that, where did you get that, where is that policy?
That policy?
That nine, three, two, seven.
It was, you just read directly from it, or was?
No, this is just a clarification for the public.
This is a statement on behalf of the board.
Alright, cuz I, I'm like, that doesn't, that's not what the policy says, but, okay.
It aligns to the policy, I mean.
You guys just.
Okay.
And it does say here, though, um, we offer two public sessions at each meeting, but at the special meetings, we don't.
Right.
Right? Okay, I just wanna make sure, cuz then that could just lead to confusion, cuz I'm sure there will be a.
Special meetings have.
Just the one.
They're a specific agenda.
Mm-hmm. I can amend that to say, except for special or emergency meetings.
Yeah, just cuz then I, I don't want anyone to, cuz I know that came up at the last special meeting.
My other thing, and this is for the policy committee, we had talked about a year ago about creating an avenue so that people who can't be here can send us an email and, and request that it be read during public comment. I mean, I personally am pro that, but I haven't heard any cons to that. So I'd like to, I'd, I'd like for that to happen during a policy meeting, so that, that kind of becomes an avenue also for people to be heard.
Right. Thank you, okay, now we have time for the first public comment. Anyone? Anyone online?
We do have, uh, someone online. Okay, I think you could just start by stating your name and town, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name is Amanda Betty, um, I'm speaking today because, um, in regards to the board communications, um. I'm deeply concerned for my children's safety and well-being following the release of the, the release of the statement from the chairman um, that went out through Parent Square the other day. Um, the messaging felt pretty clearly directed at myself and my family, and since its release, I've had, um, several people harassing me um, online, on social media, um, contacting me, you know, um. I also believe that the email that I've sent to the board, um, in regard to the statement, was shared with someone acting in bad faith, who then targeted me further, um, with harassment. Um, and it's really taken a toll, um, since that's gone out. Um, this kind of public targeting, especially through official district channels, has long-term consequences for not just my children's reputations and how they're gonna be treated in school and their future opportunities. Um, but it's a dangerous precedent set for this district in how it's going to handle conflict. Um, additionally, I do believe that, um, any discussions, um, even though you did say will be an executive session for investigations, um, I, I just believe that it should be held publicly, not an executive session, um, because the board has no authority to do anything. There's no removal of any members, you can't, you can't do anything. I think that, that, um, anything discussed should be public, should be transparent, um. Accountability is essential, and these issues should not be hidden behind closed doors. I urge the board to take this seriously, recognize the harm caused by messaging, um, of personal conflict and personal issues um, through district-owned communications, um. Just, i- i- it cannot happen. It's so unethical and so ridiculous. Thank you.
Any others? The outside line?
I don't see any other hands up.
If not, thank you, uh, we move to in number six, uh. We, uh, he's from ONG.
He's ONG.
Oh, oh, my.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, um, I am Dan Hetzler, I am the Construction Project Manager for ONG in charge of your projects here. I appreciate being moved up on the agenda. I do have another obligation this evening. Um, so I wanted to let you all know where we're at on the, on the renovations that we're doing in the swing space. Um, at Strong School, the, uh, the work is nearing finish. Um, all of the work is complete as far as the finishes go in those areas, uh, with the exception of finished flooring, which is, uh, which is wrapping up on Friday. Uh, we've coordinated with, uh, with Eric as far as how we're swinging our final cleaning crews and our punchless crews, uh, through that space while he finishes final cleaning the floors and putting the wax on the floors in the main corridors, um, and the area that we broke out at the end of the hallway there. Um, point taken, or point to mention here is that the punch list for that space was done today with myself and, uh, and Carson from QA and M. I'm sure you all met, uh, no significant items on that list, a total of fifty-nine items were generated, um, and their finish items, you know, their, their level of finish, there's scratches in the wallboard paint items, um. Other work to be completed at Strong School remains, um, we have structured cable faceplates to install. Uh, next week, we bring in the, uh, Siemens Controls Group to do the HVAC thermostat installation. Um, with those two items and our final clean on Tuesday, the you know, the work is substantially complete, you're loading furniture into those spaces, uh, at the end of next week. Let's see if I've missed anything, our ONG, we have a person that's role is a MEP coordinator. So he's a fellow on a more complex project, like your memorial school project. Um, his role is to be involved throughout the document reviews, and then he provides assistance to the construction team doing, uh, QA QC during the course of construction, but then, most importantly, he's there at the end game where we're starting up systems, documenting training, and he's gonna play that role alone and for you for the swing space, in that he's involved with Siemens Controls, with final air balancing, and making sure that uh, everything meets and works as, as it's appropriate, making sure that Eric has complete knowledge of how the a couple of new pieces of, of HVAC equipment have been implemented. Um, he was also out earlier this week doing his own quality control checks in the ceilings, and we're, we're in good shape at, at Strong School. Um, one thing I'll mention is the signage is not in, uh, but that's something I have to get a firm date yet. Um, at the Lyman Portables, the, uh, the big work there was the site work and creating that parking lot. We did pave that parking lot a week and a half ago, um, that's now paved and striped. Um, embankments in the sidewalk that gets you to the set of stairs is complete up there. Um, the portables, so we've gone through your portables, there was, uh, a lot more uh, work to be done as far as the condition of the, the wood siding. Some of the structural members underneath the, the floor needed to be replaced, um, we're through that process, uh, tomorrow. And probably into Friday, they'll finish up putting the siding back on. Um, but the interiors of your existing one, two, three, four, we call them portable, one, two, three, four. Um, the interior finishes are done, the, well, I shouldn't say that, because we're still doing the floors. But all of the wallboard work is finished, uh, ceilings got taken down, ceilings got put back in. We're installing lights at this point, we're installing finished flooring at this point. Uh, we're coordinating with Eric again as far as his ability to load furniture and move a lot of the product that is hampering the rest of your space. Uh, we wanna get that product back into portables one through, one through four. Um, we have the furniture moving back in there on the twenty-sixth, so a little bit more work involved in that space, but we're, again, loaded and ready to, uh, to bring your kids back into the school. The two new portables, um, we've finished all the, the heavy earthwork that had to be happened ahead of the new portable foundations, the foundations have been installed. Um, we are in the process, or today, we mean yesterday, we're bringing sanitary and electrical services under the footprint of those portables. The portables physically arrive on property on Friday. Uh, we crane-set them on Monday, and then it's a race to the finish line to, uh, to construct the wood decks and ramps and for the sidewalk to get, you know, proper egress, uh, and illegal egress into the buildings. Uh, so there's a significant amount of work. Um, having gone through the schedule and daily monitoring of the work, we are in a comfortable position without weather delays, uh, but furniture would move in there if I had no delays from what I put on paper, uh, furniture would be moving in there on the twenty-seventh. Having been through this a few times in my life, I wanted to be careful, and you know, you never know what Murphy has in store. And so I did let, uh, Kim know and, and, and Howard know that, you know, there is the potential that something could happen between, you know, when these things land on Monday to when they actually open up. We have communications to connect, we have fire alarm to connect, and then we have the simple things of, of water power and sewer. Um, so I did provide the, you know, we had mentioned a couple of months ago, or a month ago, would be accurate, that there's a potential that, you know, you'll need a swing space, you'll need a space for the children that are expected to utilize that classroom space um, into the first week of school, and I'm s- saying that again today. So there is the potential for that, um, but we are tracking and working diligently to get to the goal of having furniture in that space, um, and a C of O on the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of the month.
Can I, can I ask you a question? You said that you had expensive more work with the floorboards than you anticipated, did you find mold? Is there, what was the reason?
No mold, no mold, um, we just found rotted wood. Um, so the, your portable number one, which is labeled number two on the sign on the door, um, the one closest to the parking area had, had a roof leak that, or siding leak that came in. And although you could feel the floor wiggle under your feet, you know, before we tore, tore apart, once we lifted plywood, we saw, you know, just wire rot in the joists, so we replaced about, we replaced four joints, we sistered another half a dozen joints in order to restore the floor condition. There's just more, because the, what we thought we'd find was a little bit of decayed rot, um, on the sill, what would be a sole plate in typical house construction, um, but it was under the floor, so we had to go a little deeper.
At, at what point can we kind of like make the, uh, game time decision of if we're gonna like go into the swing space for like the first week of school potentially, because you know, selfishly, I have a kid who's, you know, supposed to be in there. So I know, just, you know, being a parent, that if you're gonna tell me the day before school starts, oh, FYI, actually, her classroom's not ready, and she's gonna be in the library, I'm gonna probably be pretty upset. So, you know, are we kind of saying like a week out? Like, cause then we're gonna be able to see the delays, like, kind of what's our timeline?
Right now, I can tell you, we're planning as if we're a week out. Just, you know, we haven't sent communications out because we're just waiting to get a little further. But, um, Mr. Ford is communicating or will be communicating with staff about it first, you know, to start making plans, but we, we always want to plan for the what-if, so we're planning for the what-if right now.
And that is the backup?
Yep, it would be in room twenty-three, I think.
Is the back, the backup swing space is in a classroom or?
Yes, it's in a classroom. Yep. So at the most, it would be two half days and I think three full school days that, uh, before kids move in.
And again, that's the what-if, you know, that's if Mr. Murphy shows up in my, my two-week plan.
The only, um,
I got a big project to build for you.
The, the question was, is anybody displaced from the room that that fourth grade classroom would go into? That's an interventionist classroom. So the interventionists at the beginning of the year are usually prepping and doing scheduling and may, maybe pushing into classrooms or stuff. So it, it, that's the room that's going to be the best location and provide the least inter- interruption.
And I've also noticed we've gotten some pretty good updates with Strong via Parents Square. I think there's been like two or three communications with some pictures. You don't think, I could be wrong. I've seen anything for a lineman. And so I'm just wondering now, what point, you know, just any sort of update for parents, um, because it's great. Visual person, so yeah.
Yeah, pictures are awesome. You can see a lot more. I apologize that I wasn't able to get those prepared for this evening. Um, but we did provide a bunch of photographs, um, of the work going on at Strong in last month's presentation. Um, those photos are available, so that will be, my engineer is out sick, unfortunately, so if he's back to work tomorrow, um, then we'll be able to package up another similar item. And this, a similar project update. And, uh, this one will contain a lot more photos of, of what you'd see if you were able to get inside the existing portals.
If I can expand on that, we're, working actually, Patty Smith is actually working on a portion of the website that you just, you say our school is now this memorial project. It's under construction, but you can go there and look at it. She's populating it with pictures and updates and stuff, so. But I wanted to mention that tonight too to anybody and, you know, and put that out on a parents square.
Yeah, that would be great. Like just, hey, go here for like, you know, updates throughout, you know, all of our construction projects.
And that's what we're gonna keep that site right until.
So we'll say by Friday, we'll send a narrative and photographs of what the inside of those existing portals look like. And you can see what the cycle, uh, progress is.
Quite a lot to say.
Is there, Dan, questions? Are plumbing in the, the fifth grade rooms that were divided at Strong for, um, like a sink? Cause I know in the old fifth grade rooms have sinks. They don't, okay. Cause I was just wondering how we're gonna accommodate. Their fifth grade doesn't move there in the, that room all day long. So we'll have to accommodate how they normally structure their day with like washing hands and projects and stuff.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. As to how things are going.
All right, we haven't meeting on the twentieth, so.
We, I'll see you all. See us run again next week.
Thank you. Now we have, um, item number now seven, Google Minutes of the Board of Education meeting July ninth, two thousand twenty-five, the motion to approve. Anybody?
So moved.
I have some law. Some amendments.
Who seconded?
I have, I have some amendments uh, to put out. I should have noticed this before, but when, when, uh, a motion is made and then the vote is concorded, the names of the two people who make the emotion, make the motion are not listed in as either approving or not approving. And their name should be there because just because someone makes a motion, it doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna approve their approving the motion. So please don't make motions of negative, we should make them positive.
Many of them are made for discussion.
So anytime there's any, uh, motions that were made, like in the July ninth minutes for, for the approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes, uh, for the policy review and for adjournment, uh, the names of the people making the motions should also be listed.
Thank you.
Uh, the other thing is under the, on July ninth minutes, yeah, what injury report surveyed by Todd. This should be put in, in the same area with the questions that Bob Moore was asking Todd. Uh, it was myself. I asked a question. I said, Mrs. But, this is what should be put in. Mrs. Betrowa asked if the types of injuries could be reported with their particular sport. And Mr. Petronio stated that would be a violation of FERPA, I believe.
He talked about HIPAA.
Or HIPAA.
Yeah, it's technically FERPA.
Yeah. I'm approving both sets because I have some people July saying.
We only took the motion.
So it's just mine. Okay.
I just have a question. If we can, instead of, uh, labeling a member as late if we can record when they arrive. I just.
That's, that's.
A little too much red pen there, huh?
Well, look, I was late. I mean, I, I arrived after the start. It just hurt my heart a little.
There's also, um, a section, we got a, um, letter from Emma Quick also, and I do agree with her. There's a section that um, does go, we went through the community members who made conversation, um, and spoke. And Craig Brandonini, it says from Durham, um, I do think it's important.
Special meeting.
On sixteen?
One, yeah.
It's on the ninth. We're still on the ninth.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hold that thought for the next five minutes.
Any other comments, amendments to the minutes for the ninth? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Now we have motion for Board of Education's special meeting July sixteenth, the motion to approve.
Someone?
Second? Second? Session?
Yeah, I'm gonna add again with any of the motions, which I did not list specifically. Uh, the persons making the motion also need to be listed on who approved. Uh, obviously, they didn't approve, we've been obvious, but. And also under, um, discussion, gosh, you know, that page, discussion and possible action on a request for indemnification. Um, in that section, end of paragraph four, the statement should read, it was something that, that I had said, and it, it starts with those like, right at the end of that paragraph. Um, it says, and this is, I'm not starting at the beginning of the sentence, I'm starting in the middle. It says noting that such coverage depends on what had to do with the insurance. Noticing, noting that such coverage depends on whether, and I'd like to add the words, or not, the actions in question were carried out with malice. Just said whether or not, no considerations.
Yep, again, uh, Mr. Craig Brandonini, um, from Durham, I think that he had stated and also recognizing that he's a union, um, was stating as a union, um, leader that he, and I don't think it was community members, I'm pretty sure it was staff members that were here. And he's actually an attendant, so I, I don't know, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't want to overstep, but I believe that that was an error in the minutes.
How, how he was, how he introduced himself, you mean?
Yes, and also that he was representing on staff members.
Okay.
It doesn't say that.
We can watch the recording and see what was there.
And then I think she questioned the time in and out of executive session.
And I'm gonna have those.
Yeah, and I don't have it either, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Can you tell me what you were questioning with the time? Cause I'm the one who did those times of.
Um, in the, um, email we got this afternoon from Emma Quick, she said that she thought that the time in and out referenced in the minutes for executive session were incorrect. I don't know what the minute, what time we entered and what time we exited. I know it's a lot, so I can't venture a guess, but I just want more to pass it along.
If there's any correction, Sydney can make that, but, um, if anybody else has any more information than Sydney on that.
It's on YouTube, so we.
Right, we can watch it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. With those changes, all in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed? Thank you. Oh, item eight, superintendent's report.
Um, as usual, I, uh, don't want to read my report verbatim, but I do have a couple of things that I really want to highlight is, uh, we have been doing a lot of continued work on some four, five this way. We've been doing a lot of work on planning just for this first year as we prepare for the strategic planning process. And what I wanted to show the board is a visual of, uh, sort of like how we're putting this puzzle piece together with leadership team. So, um, you know, this year will be a big strategic planning process year where we're gonna be getting a lot of input from the community and putting that bigger picture together. Uh, and the first year for that, we've all agreed is gonna be our culture and climate planning here. You know, that's gonna lay the foundation for moving forward. So I wanted to point out a visual that we went over, um, just even yesterday where we've got three kind of major buckets that we're working on this year, which I'm also trying to put out in my newsletters to the community and the staff and back to school. Uh, so we've got a lot going on with restorative practices. You're gonna hear a lot about this year. And those sort of go into two areas where we want to emphasize proactive behavior in terms of just, uh, we can have Addie back a little bit, like kindness, being good to each other. Um, how do we speak to each other? How do we, you know, work on just our everyday, um, community kind of work? And that goes into having high expectations across the board, high expectations for how we behave as a school community. And we also really highlighted, we want to increase some voices that we'd like to hear more from. So we'd like to hear more from our students and our support staff as we go through this process. Um, the other part of restorative practices is when you get into what happens when there's challenging behavior. Might, I don't know if it might shock you, but sometimes in schools, there's challenging behavior from your kids. Um, so when we look at challenging behavior, we want to look at really creating a very consistent data system um, across K through twelve. So we are looking at, uh, actually creating a system for recording office referrals, behavior referrals that are, that's consistent across K through twelve, so we can really carefully look at that data and figure out where we can do better. And we want to make sure that that's connected on that form when people do referrals to our core ethical values. So we really want to emphasize those core ethical values and have that be part of our whole behavior system. Uh, we're going to be looking into additional bullying and harassment training, um, across the board. And we have some, just some Title IX work, which, um, is not, I don't think is gonna be extensive, but we want to relook at those policies and those practices and how we move forward, which also you can see the line is related to the second major thing, which is where we're gonna be looking at equity, which would, um, connect to anti-discrimination work. Um, it has come back on a lot of the culture and climate surveys that have gone out as an area of need. And as we're going into this big curriculum process this year, we want to make sure that equity is at the forefront of our curriculum development and review process. Um, and I'll just also highlight that we had a great meeting with our rest today with ACES about how we can move forward with curriculum. So that's all going really, really well. And then we've had a lot of discussion about community, um, since we're, you know, we are a community and we're looking at culture and climate. And under community, we've really highlighted three major themes that we want to work towards this year. Uh, the first is again, really making sure that those core ethical values of regional school district thirteen move forward in absolutely everything that we do. Um, you're gonna be hearing a lot about those all throughout this year and hopefully beyond that. Uh, we talked a lot about in when you're in a, a community, we need people to go from the me to the we. We want people to start thinking about the me and what's best for me and what's going to be best for the we, what's gonna be best for the, the whole of the school community. And one thing is we don't want to forget joy. You know, schools are great places to be. Kids have a great experience here. I'm think, I'm sure everybody would agree, um, that there's a lot of great things that are happening here and we want to bring that, that uh, reminder and that everyday presence of joy is that learning is fun. And, um, schools are, are a fun and good place for everybody to be. So I really wanted, I mean, most of everything else that's in my report are things that are either gonna come up on the agenda or things that you can read on your own. But I really wanted to highlight that for you as the umbrella of the work that we're really looking at this year to start the foundation for moving forward. And I'm happy to take any questions about that. And thank you to the leadership team who've worked incredibly hard to help put this together. Some of them are here.
Well, I'm in the report. Is there anybody else have any questions, I said? Everybody?
There is a lot here. I also, I try not to, oh, I mean, policy work, I do try not to bring up things that you're gonna hear about in a minute. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for this. I, I, uh, I know it's been a very short time period, but I know that you guys have been working very hard. Is that great? Kevin and they have, uh, guys are working hard.
She's, she's got us going.
All right, good. We'll leave it at there.
We're all very happy.
We are. Thank you, Celeste. Thanks very much.
We've got good work going on.
Good.
There's a few extra. I don't know if anybody in the audience wants.
Thank you, the chairman's update, um, still have a lot of update, but. I didn't attend, uh, a K meeting last, uh, week. I actually were Lindsay led a, uh, panel on uh, advocacy, uh, for legislators, uh, at the end of the K meeting. Conference was very, so it had been attended by most board chairs, so it was a really good, and she did a really good job there. Um, we have a, we're trying to schedule a retreat. Uh, so it would be, we're looking for, I have two dates, one is next week on Saturday and Sunday, perhaps Friday night. And the other one is the September uh, sixth and seventh. So if anybody has a preference.
I'm sorry, say that again.
September sixth and seventh. No, it's gonna be only one day, but the dates that we have.
You'd say the sixteenth, the seventeenth, and the twenty-third, and the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-second and twenty-third and twenty, twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
You got kids going back to school in college.
I know, that's, and the other one is in September sixth and seventh.
I'm good for sixth or seventh.
Sixth or seventh better, but.
It's only one of those days, so.
Yeah.
Saturday or Sunday.
It's not a weekend away.
It's not, yeah. Got time to figure out how to do it.
I'm good for sixth or seventh.
I'm good. I would prefer the sixth, but I could make either one work.
Christine?
Sixth or seventh?
Do one?
Sixth.
The sixth, sixth. All right, we're trying to get something scheduled for Saturday, the sixth or seventh.
Uh, morning? Yeah, do people prefer morning or afternoon?
Morning.
Weekend morning.
Early.
Yeah. Like eight?
We'll get a place and then we'll get out to the assembly. We're trying to do it off campus, but it's, it'll be here.
Um, I haven't done a board retreat with you before, so is, are we thinking like eight to eleven, like three hours or? Do they usually go?
Probably thinks three hours. Normally we will probably go over. You know, we have to go over committee structure, committee membership. Have to go over our goals and, uh, objectives and policies for the year. Couple ideas that will be coming up on policy. And then, uh, I do a work on some restorative practice exercise. Right? Anything else?
Eleven, but hard stop at twelve.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just that.
Probably three hours, but no more than four. And we'll get a place that have more comfortable chairs, hopefully.
It would be to rain this.
Great. So, uh, we'll look for the retreat on September sixth. And we'll get out to the end of this place where we're gonna have it from eight to eleventh. Plus twelve. Thank you. Uh, that's really all I have. Um, again. There's nothing else. Uh, next is the staff report from Kim.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we finished the uh twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, ninety-nine point five-one percent of our budget was expended.
Well done.
And we have received ninety-nine point nine percent of our revenue.
So we're ahead a little bit.
Yeah, so um.
I'll cut you a check for the five bucks.
I know. In that estimated um in the budget, we had used two hundred fifty thousand of an estimated surplus to balance twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um, and I came, we came in at two hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred. So it was five thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars short of that that estimate. So, but we'll be able to hopefully. Absorb that in the twenty-five and twenty-six budget. Um, audit field work uh began on July twenty-eighth. I always want to thank Tippi Pup because she does an amazing job with that. Um, they're returning again in October to complete the audit uh field work. Uh, we typically get the audit report in December. We'll buy lots, do by the end of December, um and then the auditors will come in January, February, whatever the board prefers to present. Uh, for the month of July, in our new fiscal year, we have expended four point three-three percent. We have encumbered fifty-four point seven-five percent, um and we received one percent of our revenue. We've encumbered very high because I always encourage anything that anyone knows to as a. As a sure expense such as electric bills, we encumber our total amount and things that we can encumber total so that I can look at the balance that's. Make sure we're not over expended anywhere. So um we have encumbered fifty-five percent of the budget so far. Um, one quick other note, I wanted to just update on the concession stand. Um, we had the twenty-five thousand dollars budget put in the capital um for the concession stand. Um, Eric has met with the health official who had completed the inspection. Um, he gave a list of equipment that needed to be ordered. Um, it comes to about ten to twelve thousand dollars, so there is still money left. Um, this is the first step. The first step he uh recommended or required an air conditioning unit. Or chips and things that could go stale, commercial microwave, commercial freezer, coffee machine, portable hand wash sink, a commercial pretzel warmer and a commercial refrigerator. Um, the goal is to have all that in. It's been ordered. So the goal is to have all that in and to have it uh operating properly for beginning of the season. Um, grilling is still allowed, but it's allowed outside. Uh, we are having um application on and checklist for this. Are in draft form right now, and so they don't have to go to the policy committee simply because of regulations. Um, but we'll share those with um. Dr. Leggett and get advice and opinions and then we'll start sharing that out with the the community who who would like to use it. Uh, you will reserve it through us. Um, there is not going to be a fee, uh but there is um. Sort of a checklist, like this is how I found it. This is how I left it. Note of it, like if you rent a car, right? This, the pretzel warmer was broken when I got here. So we can kind of make sure we have some accountability. Food will have to come and go with you. We won't be able to that unfortunately. That's different from past years, but that's what's required from the health official.
Is there a water tank out there for hand washing? She said portals. We're not getting the water line over there.
So I think the water line is there, but this is a portable, like a little sink in, so it's really just a hand washing. So I have that. Um. Yeah, so that's, that was good news. We can use the existing structure and you know, that'll hopefully get us going and then we can. With the additional money that's left in that budget, we can start adding on to those as. That organizations tell us they'd like to see in there. Okay. That's all I have.
So it's all clean and ready to go. Now, when the equipment comes in.
It's all cleared out and when the equipment comes in, it'll get installed and fingers crossed it'll be, you know, hopefully for one of our first home games, it'll be available, but. Again, anything could happen, um delays or anything, but that's. We've, it's in, the process is well in motion.
And is Patty reaching out to organizations to let them know?
Um, and anyone who's reached out to her, she has uh replied to with this information.
I know.
Yeah. Patty, yep, yep. So.
We can probably get her the emails and other ones, just she might want to send it. Ones, the ones that currently use or used it in the past.
Sure.
That'll be fine.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, the next is uh board communications and professional development. Uh, any communications that we talked about? I have a whole list of people who we've communicated with uh. And responded to. I could just go through their names, but I think all you have, I think I forwarded my responses. Jill Sobolaski, DG, DG Harmon. Uh, Holland, I think. Steven List, Laurie Fusco, Renner. Ellie Conifield, Amanda Betty. Yeah, Tena, McKenna, Molly Clark, Dana, and Donzito. And I've also received. Oh. But those are all basically concerning negative issues. Uh, also received letters from Mike Scata. On Seidman and Keith. Jason, they're all in support. Actually, letters of support for Lindy, they were. From uh various chairman of the board of education. So uh those are the communications. That I have. Anybody else?
Well, there was Emma Quick today and Elizabeth Shoudy today. So those are more recent ones. People. Those to the whole board?
Uh, no.
I don't know. I didn't go through to like look at everyone's name and I just.
It looks like it's the whole board.
No, I said.
About everybody.
Nope.
Um, well. It does happen.
Right? Um. I have nothing on professional development. There is some K conferences coming up in. November, uh. It'd be great if some of you think, oh, they're usually on a Friday and Saturday or. And normally down in Mystic.
Uh, yeah, Mystic Marriott. And there's an early registration now, so it's it's cheaper now for the district. It is in our professional development budget. If you sign up for it now, it's cheaper, but I think up until. The week before you can sign up.
It'd be good to, anybody who has time, be good to go there uh productive. Alright, the next is um building committee. Think. Has most of it has already been covered, but building committee met uh. We had a long discussion of design. We had a lot of discussions with site development. At Memorial School, the parking lot issue was really. Took on a lot of the discussion whether or not. Uh, there would be raised to get, there were dead ends in the parking lot so they could get in and get out. Uh, at different ways. So we we revised the parking area so that uh it's a lot freer flow through there and people can. I won't get stuck at the end having to back up to get out. So that was important. Uh, we talked about uh the. Pickleball court and tennis courts and then where they would be located. Uh, and there would be access. Uh, also we noted that. Fall uh soccer is available uh at the fields of Memorial for this year. Um. There was uh. Yeah. Come right, both of it. Uh, there was also discussion of hazmat contractor and we selected a, we approved it. Uh. Hazmat company to do the hazmat work on the demolition of Memorial. And. We did, and then I I think that was the extent of it. ONG gave a presentation of basically what they had said tonight. Uh, and so that was. A little more detailed, but that's basically what was said. We approved uh hazmat contract to. And only uh. Is the name of the perm for hazmat evaluation. We approved several other invoices. On the um. The contracting work to. And the designers and also a number of legal fees. They're all in the minutes. And we also decided not to go with, go with the owner's rep. Uh, for the project and uh we've worked on getting the specs for that to be go out for an R and P for an owner's rep. I think it's kind of called owner's, owner's project manager. And that will be up shortly.
Friday.
Friday. Uh, and that will take, give us, help us through the process of approving invoices and making sure work is done. Uh, so that it's don't rely on Tim and other staff to go out there and do all that. So that will be done. And we also. Talked about the track and that. I think everybody's put out to see the track and learn the colors and great transitions on hopefully. Uh, I've talked to some of the students who run on it. They said they liked it. Uh, they seem to like the colors. Uh. Again, had a discussion of the concession stand and just got a better update. Him. Uh, we also talked about the. High school tennis courts. Uh, and their condition that we need to deal with. We will have affirmed Nathan Jacobson will go to look at some drainage issues. Uh, uh, kind of where the bleachers are in front and then along the back between uh softball field and. Uh, see if there's some blockage or missing drainage in that area that could help reduce the water impacts on the courts. Anything else? Anybody?
I wasn't able to attend the last building committee. Is there still a good dialogue with the neighbors? At in Memorial School. I know they started conversation. Just want to make sure everything is.
Yeah, so you're working pretty closely with them and I think uh they've had several meetings. And they've stayed and contacted everybody.
Have each other's cell phones.
Huh?
They have each other's cell phones.
Yeah, they've exchanged phone. But and a lot of the. You can see the current, this current layout puts very little parking and Jason's their property, so they're concerned with the runoff or not. Uh, are really been accommodated by the change in the parking areas. So that looks good.
And that lower, that lower section's all open space too, their fields before they had a layout where the playground was down there, so that was going to cause extensive noise down there. So I think that'll be better for them.
I also mentioned that uh the pickup and gap for strong school. Uh, I know that. Hallie and a few others of the building committee are working with the principal to come up with plan that probably needs to go out fairly soon as well.
They're still with him.
Yeah. There's a lot, one. Fine detail on that. Alright, I think anything else in the building committee? Anybody else? The meeting next week. Time for new business and possible hopes. First is the ESEC. Panel transmission letter and. Collaborative conference report.
Turn it over to Principal Stone.
I'm just going to get the laptop. He's going to put, it's only five slides. Maybe it would be very proud of my date.
Forty-six pages.
Um, so.
Forty-six pages.
Yeah, so I put that in there for you to read for, just for funsies, but this kind of sums it up very nicely and I'm sorry if I got this to all the people over there. So uh we are, we had our NEAS uh accreditation year, our ten-year visit. It was really like year twelve. Uh, for a variety of reasons, including COVID and some other things. Um. What's that? You're doing great, Jen. Um, so this just gives you the overview. Um. You know, it's when it was, when the ASK was established. What they now use, which is the five standards down from, I think there were seven or eight previously. Um. While this is still a big project, it's not as big of a project of a self-study as it was previously. Um, so if you've sat on boards before, been involved, Jamie Ray or Craig and these. Um, the self-study starts in the fall. Um. Katie and I are not involved. The principal and the vice principal administration is not involved. We sent up the committee. So it was run by Mike Brady and Aaron Schelling. Who then got um people to work on the various five standards. And did a self-study and I can't thank Central Office enough. There was, you know, they needed financial information. They needed things from Liza. Um, they did the whole self-study. We put the report together, we send it off and they came to visit us in March. Um, so it's a ten-year cycle, but they come back. In two years to see how much growth we've made after they finished the report. So we sent them, they came out in March. Uh, they visited for a day and a half. They wrote their report. I think we got it in early June, which is why I'm here now. So as you can see, self-reflection collaborative conference, we did those two things and now we are here setting up our growth plan. Um, and it's. You know, great that we have Dr. Leggett because a lot of this stuff hooks into the things we're doing district-wide, not just um at the high school. So I'll start, oh, we start with the good, right? I started with the commendations and the recognitions and you can see those all in there. They're very well written out. Much more detail, um but I didn't think that that was what you guys wanted tonight. So among the things, the strong relationships with students and adults at the high school. Um, the opportunities the students have along with the internships and the capstone. Um, they saw, these are things they saw and they wrote about authentic inquiry-based experiences. Um, they did like the flexible PD days that we've gone to in the teacher's contract. They thought that was the teachers reporting out to the committee. Felt um and the committee thought that was a very proactive thing that we were doing. And that thanks to, again, you guys and Eric and his team, the well-maintained, safe aspect of our schools. Um, very technologically equipped. Um, you know, they, they thought the kids had a lot of really nice opportunities here at the high school. And then they always come up with what do you need to work on? Um, they usually identify three or four areas and indeed they came up with four. There's no surprises here. It's things we've talked about. I think for the four years I've been up at the high school. We, we need to, along with the strategic plan, uh finish up or or get. Going further on the vision of the graduate. It was work we had all done years ago and then COVID hit. I remember being in this room at a meeting. I think Laura, you were probably here. Craig was here. Um, we were at a meeting. Bob, you were there too, and we were getting ready to put it all together. And then we were out and it just lost all its steam. Um, the written curriculum, which we knew was an area that we needed to look at, the, the cycle, what cycle you're in, where you are, what needs to be reviewed. Making sure everybody knows, making sure the formatting is all the right way. Um, if it's in UBD design, then it all needs to be like that. Um, the growth plan, which is going to be part of the strategic plan for the school with measurable goals and outcomes. Um, and then common planning time and they were, they. They saw that it existed, but what they said, the teachers and the committee said. It lacks defined structures and expectations. So when they do meet, what are the outcomes of those meetings? Um, they, my teams, my academic teams. Meet together, have the opportunity to meet together three times a week. They don't have to meet together three times a week. They're required to meet once. But sort of that PLC process has sort of fallen um to the wayside and how can we resurrect that and use the time that they have together um effectively? So moving forward, these are the things we're planning on doing. I keep bringing them back when we're at leadership team. We've had six days together this summer. I always get my two cents in. We need to work on that vision of the graduate. Um, Liza, we had an extensive conversation yesterday at leadership team about the curriculum development and where we are in the cycles. Uh, develop that student growth plan, which comes out of the district growth plan and the strategic plan. And work on um with my team leaders and other people in the building, how to structure that planning time and support more interdisciplinary work. Math, working with science, social studies, working with English. Um, those things that we've always strived for and are really. Difficult sometimes to do, but you know, we have to get those back in the forefront for kids. That's it. That's the whole thing.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Not, not just for being done, but you know, one of the things you're always scared about with those is that here, here's this very pretty rock. And then you lift it up and there's worms on the other side. Like you said, we, we've been aware. So like it didn't reveal anything shocking or, or it's like, yeah, we're working on it. So congratulations.
Thank you. It, it did really feel good having been up there for just four, three and a half, four years. I wasn't sure. What, what was going to be under the rock and um, like I said, that's why Katie and I aren't involved so that we can't have any undue influence over the process. Because if I'm sitting in a room and they're talking to teachers, they might respond differently if I'm there. And so it was. It was very well received. I think the process, Craig, I think the process was good. Um, and it gives us a cap more for this.
Yeah, how do you define a growth plan?
How do I define a growth plan? Well, first you need goals, right? So you know.
Is that a growth plan for the faculty? Is a growth plan for the students? Is a growth plan for the community?
So, yes, yes, all those things. So I, I think, you know, when you talk about measurable. So, yes, yes, all those things. So I I think, you know, when you talk about measurable outcomes. We have to decide that, like who are we starting with? So if we're starting with restorative practices, we do, we are going to have a. A plan for the adults, a plan for the students, a plan for how we're reaching out to the community and doing different things. Getting to that, you know, how how do we know? Is is what we have to put down in writing and make sure that we have so that I can come back when they come back in two years. I can say to them, look. Here's where we were. You said we were here. This is what we've done. And they say, okay, you're working for it. That's why they come back in two years. They don't want you to lose sight. Of it, you know, just come back in ten years and say, well, you went to two, uh, restorative training practices, uh, first, uh, professional development. And that's all you did. Is that growth? No, but you could make anything seem.
That ties in with your strategic planning.
Absolutely. That's, yeah, and it's, I mean, it it is, uh, it's. In a way fortunate that we can do all of this work at once, right? So all some of these things are already in motion. So. You know, we knew coming in this year that we're it's going to be strategic planning year. At the same time, we knew N E S was wanting to work on a vision of a graduate. So. That's what N E S calls it, uh, vision of a graduate.
Yeah, whatever we call it, we can call.
Yeah, um. And then, uh, at the same time, what we have in motion is we have a person who's worked with our Connecticut Superintendent's Association and Harvard. To do cohorts on vision of a graduate. Uh, what we're going to do is we're going to contract her to come in to do like a train the trainer with our leadership team and our staff so that we can. Uh, do a homegrown version of that instead of just sending people to one to two day workshops. Uh, we can do that by having her come in, work with the leadership team, and then that becomes part of the strategic planning process. So like. We're traveling down those roads at the same time so that it all fits together. Um, the curriculum development piece, again, we had a fantastic meeting with Aces today. Uh, about moving forward with all of that work. And I was really excited about that meeting. I think Dr. Siegel was as well. And we're gonna get that in motion, you think even sooner than we thought we would this year, which is which is great. So it it's a lot of different puzzle pieces, but they are all aligning right now.
And the piece with the elementary, Bob, just because we've been through this before, like. I I can't tell you how valuable I think it is not to think of vision of the graduate, as we talked about last time we did this whole thing, as the four years of high school.
Mm-hmm.
It's.
Pre-K.
It's pre, yeah, everybody and and our leadership team. Knows that inherently. They 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 are already thinking that way. And as we do with everything else, we consider it. Pre-K twelve, which is really important to me. Having done it almost every level.
You've been through this numerous times. I mean. The process has been streamlined. Are you happy with that?
It is. I haven't been through it before, uh, but Katie led it in her last district. Um, Aaron, um, helped lead it last time he was here. And Craig was on it. So more streamlined, yeah. So I mean, where they would have pages and pages for each standard. Now they said if they get more than a page and a half, they're unhappy with it. Um, the thing that took the longest was getting the report. Because it's it's other educators, right? It's another superintendent who lead, I mean, uh, principal, vice principal that leads the visiting team. With teachers from different towns. So they had to, they stay up late that night and write most of it. And then he has the head of the committee has to edit it. And then send it back to the ask for it to be finally edited. So that's, we didn't get it back until like June first and we handed it in. It was. Our report went in in January. They visited us in March. But we, but it, I can't imagine how they did it last time.
Going back about a year and a half ago, we we did have a representative from the ask come here. And they were encouraging that the entire district be accredited. Do you see any value to that? I wasn't for it mostly because I didn't want to burden administration at every school and and you're saying it's not as much of a burden to you. So you see any value in that for as I didn't think it was a good thing where we're, we knew we were going to transition to less schools.
So in retrospect, given what we're in right now, I'm glad you guys said no. Um, for for my colleagues more than myself, um, but. Given the opportunity to do it when things calm down, the self-study is very, very enlightening, especially again, because you take. The administration sort of out of it. So the teachers are free to say. This is what we need. This is what's good for children. You know, this is how it should look. It's it's them looking at themselves. So I I do think there's a huge value in it. Um, I think our our staff was very. Open to what it said. They weren't surprised that of anything in there. And it's not all roses when you read all forty six pages. Uh, but.
But your self-study matched exactly what they found.
Absolutely.
And that doesn't always happen. And that's like.
And that's what you did say.
Honest authentic process.
Right. And that's what I liked about it. So I would say, given the opportunity. Nine years from now, if we're, if we have that opportunity again, if they're still doing that sort of thing, I do think it's something that we look at as a district. Because we're small.
There's value to it, but I don't know. You have to do it through the ask. That that the idea of that self-study is very. But to put the layer of accountability. That, like you said, it's the logistics of getting the getting it all right. That's the little one that's sending it in. I think the the reflection is essential.
I would give a good four years with Memorial open too.
Yeah, yeah, they come back in two, but we don't have to go through this process again for that. Nine now.
Thank you, Deb.
No problem.
Did we have the question whether or not we needed to vote to transmit the letter?
You just have to accept the report. So vote to accept the report.
I motion to vote to accept the E S report.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Next item is the discussion of school district resolution procedure.
Yep. So this one has, um, sort of risen to the top of the to-do list and a lot of it has to do with. Being able to. Uh, I'll read the two principals aloud so everybody who's kind of listening or here knows what we're talking about this. This is a school district resolution procedure, um, that I'm proposing to the board. The principle number one is that problems are most effectively resolved through direct respectful communication at the most immediate level. Escalation should only occur when initial attempts at resolution have been unsuccessful or when concerns persist. Principle number two is that when resolving issues, we expect everyone to adhere to the core ethical values of regional school district thirteen. So, um. What this really is is outlining a procedure of how people. Work towards having direct conversations to do problem solving, how they start at the most direct level. And the very specific steps up from that direct level that they would go. So for for an example. Uh, level one, if you have a problem with your child in school, level one is you're going to go speak to that child's classroom teacher. That's step one. Hopefully you can resolve the issues there. If it doesn't get resolved there, then step two would be the principal. Step three would be the superintendent. Step four would be the board. And then there's very specific guidelines for the board. Um, and it will take a commitment from everybody, especially the board, to redirect people for a while. Until people get used to going back to that first level and having that direct conversation. But I can tell you that, um, in my, I think. Official six weeks here right now. Um, this has risen to the top as something that is a high need in the district. Because people are jumping, you know, from zero to sixty too quickly. We're not having those direct conversations. Uh, we need to build community and this is by by actually outlining a procedure and redirecting people to follow the procedure. We are going to build a better district.
Can you just speak to the special circumstances? Cause I think it's like, it's not, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's some general guidelines. There are special circumstances where this is immediate escalation, right? So, um, we understand that special circumstances might warrant a different approach. In the following circumstances, please contact the building's principal or superintendent immediately. You know, don't worry about going through these levels. This is an imminent safety concern, any suspected abuse or neglect. Legal violations or emergency situations, you know, don't, don't, uh. Don't stop, just go straight to your building principal or to me.
So if you had.
And always, there's a couple of other things in there. It's just there's, you can always call contact law law enforcement directly. Um, any threats of violence, criminal activity, any child abuse calling D C F, um. All of those things, but, um, I do also want to say that this is very specific to parents and community members at this point. We wanted to launch this one and then revisit this for employees and staff and because there'll be some different steps in there, you know, along the way. Um, work with the union to outline that one. So this one is just specific to parents, guardians and community members.
Under law enforcement to that, um. Outline S R O versus the true.
Think any S, any law enforcement.
Just be going out to the community.
So if you, and I am going to ask you to vote to approve it. It also will take your, um, commitment, um, to everyone. You know, at every level, it'll take everyone's commitment to follow it. And yes, it would go out in all of the handbooks. This is why we wanted to get this before the board now is we wanted to put this in all the back to school handbooks. Um, we would send it out on our newsletters. We would post it on our website, make it really readily available to people. If you have a problem, please refer to this. We did, um, there's two things that we added yesterday at leadership team that weren't on the copy that you got. And we just added, um, for athletics, level one would be you go to your coach and level two would be you go to the athletic director.
Uh, motion to approve this school district resolution procedure. One second.
Just one, one piece of discussion is. I don't know if it belongs in here or somewhere that this isn't saying, don't, don't email the board.
No.
It's just that what we're hopefully, what we are committed to doing is then saying, hey, have you spoken with the teacher and or the principal and everything? And then. And and depending on the circumstance, we may respond, but it's it's not. Hey, go through the proper channels and then come back and.
Yeah, or the board can always redirect everybody to the superintendent.
I I see a typo, um, so I don't know if am I, am I voting on this as the actual final. Copy of what's being put in handbooks?
You, we can vote on it as amended. If there's a typo, we can fix the typo in the two, the two amendments from at from coach and athletic director.
Okay. Well, I haven't had enough time to read through this entire thing, so I. I definitely want to be able to read through more because I already found one typo just in looking at the first page.
Can you tell me, Rose?
Um, it's. Is that where you see it there?
So second bullet point, general guidelines, presume that everyone versus the.
So, and I also am going to say that. Um, at first, I don't see this in my email that it was attached, but it was because you printed it. I'm not saying it's not there. I'm just saying that being a busy, busy person, I didn't see it and I haven't had time to. Um, read through all this and I'm actually really bothered by the fact that our. School district even has to have something like this in, it's embarrassing.
Most quite frankly, it's actually not unusual for a school district to have this. Um, I do think that this rose to the top because, um, it's needed right now, but it's not uncommon for school district.
I'm a teacher and I've worked in several school districts. I'm, I I've never seen this.
It's a deadline to go out for handbooks.
I know. So we would, we would need to, um, I mean, handbooks are gonna be out. When would you send it out? Like before school, right? Yeah, before opening day.
Yeah, the high schools is a little different because it's sort of a living doc. It lives in more than one place, but it usually gets PDFed. And put on soon.
And if there are typos, those are easily fixed and I I don't, I wouldn't want typos to hold up a vote to be able to get this out. Um, if the board needs more time to discuss. I don't know if you want to schedule another meeting before school opening, but it would be important to be able to get this out to parents and guardians and community members before school starts.
I'd be doubt that as a procedure, it could be amended easily as well.
Yep.
Just a procedure and handbook, so.
I get it. I feel like the the material is understandable. I mean, again, I haven't read through the whole thing and I do believe that. The principle behind it is important. I do believe it's a direct insult to family members and community members by having this in a handbook.
I guess, I'm not sure.
Well, again, it's my opinion. I I.
I think if you think about it, like, you know, for those of us that work in a, you know, or have worked in a professional environment. So it's a chain of command policy, right? So I don't typically have a chain of command, but I follow exactly what you're saying. If someone comes to me as the CFO who's. Maybe a frontline staff member, I say, did you discuss this with your supervisor first? And I follow it. I don't need a policy about it. You know, I just tend to like, that's. How I must work to a professional, right? And so I get, I get the point, but I think kind of. I think what, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think kind of what you're getting at is, I think, given the climate that we're currently in as a board. There's many things even this evening that had been said previously that feel like a slap in the face to our community.
I I think I just wanted to.
Probably your intent either. I should, I should say that.
My intent, it's definitely not my intent. My intent is to get back to people having. Direct conversations where they solve their problems because when that happens. When you sit down with somebody and you have a direct conversation about a problem, you're also creating a good relationship. Where you're going to have fewer problems in the future. I find, I think that a lot of people find something like this comforting, not an insult. It's like, okay, I know exactly what I have to do. Um, I I know that this is something that the leadership team supports because it's going to make their lives better, very clearly. Um, and. I mean, I I'm more than happy to continue discussing, but I would hope that we could get this out before the beginning of the year.
I think it's almost though like the other way around now that I just think about it like. That it should be a procedure for staff of like how they handle when a parent comes to them. Like I feel like. You know, because, you know, parents or community members in general. You know, I just had this conversation before here of like, you know, sometimes when people are very, you know, passionate about any subject, you know, they tend to be. You know, very like emotional. And then to your point, when you kind of have that conversation, you de-escalate it. You know, I think you do make real progress, um.
And the staff one will come later. I mean, there's. One is this one's the more urgent one with back to school and two, we don't want to create a staff procedure when the staff isn't back.
Yeah.
You know, like we need to wait for them to come back so they're part of that process.
I think what it does is it codifies what we know is the procedure, right? I also think it provides the teachers. And and the administrators, like to be able to say. Hey, this is what the board has has said. I think it gives the teachers the. Ability to say, hey, this is above my pay grade. Right? This is, this is something that I can't resolve for you. And according to this process, go talk to Deb.
But then I also then like kind of going off what you just said, then I actually now I feel worse thinking about it like then it's like. I don't want someone to be like, oh, well, the board says, you know, here's the procedure. You have to follow this, you know, like.
And I don't think that would be the response. I think the response would be we're doing this because we're gonna build good relationships and solve problems. And. If you haven't, if I'm the principal, I would say, please remember you need to go try and talk to the classroom teacher first and and come back to me. If if that's not solved. And then I would say nine times out of ten or even more than those odds, it gets solved at that direct level.
I think it also more clearly defines roles, what people's roles are. And even especially the board because, uh, you know, over the years, I I've I've noticed that. Uh, a lot of issues are being brought to the board that should have gone other places first. Before they came to the board. And even though we might refer it, it seems like you're kind of putting people off and you don't like to do that. So I I personally don't find it insulting at all, uh, as as a former teacher and as a a parent as well. Uh, I, it's, it's well-defined. It's it's not insulting and everybody has a specific role and. I I think it would be very helpful. You have an issue with your child and. You know where to go.
And then, uh, and it also tells you how to not satisfy another group's effort.
Yeah, right.
I think that's probably the most important thing. If you're not getting direction at the level. Start it. And there's a process that you need to get. Up to the board if it's necessary. And the board needs to be out of most of these issues.
Be great. I think that, I think that board members can just easily say that. I just, I don't, I don't want the whole wording of the whole handbook. That's.
And maybe it's timing.
It's just everything. It's just on them. And I feel that a lot of this was already brought onto the board by board members. So. I feel that give it, if we all know the role of board members and we all know to, you know, defer it to someone else. So. I just don't think, and I think you said it's the timing. I don't think that this is the right timing for something like this at the moment. Um, but again, it's my opinion and it sounds like many other people are present in support of it. I just think the timing is.
And if, but if I can disagree with you more, I think there are a number of issues that have come before that had nothing to do with. The issue that you're referring to. They were here before for other reasons. And that's probably why, uh, another reason why we are where we are. And why some of these things need to be addressed.
Say it. I'm giving, I'm giving you a timeout. I'm giving, I'm giving you a timeout.
Hmm.
Unfortunately, I apologize for doing this in the middle, but unfortunately I, um. My wife is working a night shift at Middlesex. I have to take care of my daughter. I was going to be there seven thirty. Thanks. This is frightening the man. I apologize.
Thank you. Make sure you mark the time, right? That's all that, you know, left early, you know?
Two minutes late.
It's so.
Yes.
It's so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
You as well.
Is there any other discussion on whether or not we should?
Yep.
Let's save the best.
I trust the judgment of the superintendent. If it's necessary, we need to do it.
Thank you. I can, I can say that it is necessary.
All right. Any further discussion? All favor of, uh, superintendent putting out this as a procedure, resolve issues of complaint.
As amended.
As amended.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm in a.
No, who knows? Thank you. Let us know how it happened and how it works.
Thank you.
That's true. It's like a regulation. So as it changes, you'll come to us in handbook.
Next item is, um, propose a long-term substitute, right?
Uh, yep, this is, you'll, you have a memo from Mr. Bro, um, in here. Uh, we do have trouble sometimes hiring subs, uh, which is pretty universal with schools these days, and sometimes even long-term subs are harder. Uh, what we want to do when a teacher needs an extended absence is to make sure that students have the very best person in front of them. So what we want to propose here is that, uh, traditionally they would get, correct me if my numbers are wrong. A hundred and fifty dollars a day for the first forty days. And then from four, day forty-one forward, they would get the three hundred and eighty.
Three hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Per diem because these people are certified, they're doing the full work of a teacher, they're in there for the long term. Um, and we do have a couple of long-term subs this year. What we want to do is. Have people get that hundred and fifty dollars for the first forty days. And then on day forty-one, they not only move to the higher rate. But they also retroactively get a lump sum check for those first forty days that they did. It will help people to commit. To being there long-term so that the students have that consistency in front of them. We're gonna get a better applicant pool. Um, and overall, it's just gonna be better for instruction. Uh, the only exception to this is if it is a. Uh, prior regional school district thirteen teacher who is deciding to come back to help us out. They don't have to do that first hundred and fifty day, or first hundred and fifty dollar days.
No healthcare benefits.
Wonderful.
Or.
Not for a month.
Retirement.
Yeah.
And is the one fifty like competitive with the area? I feel like last time, you know, we, you know, like, I don't know, it's like Wallingford's paying one sixty, like, should we go to one sixty like?
Did just increase it this year for one thirty-five.
Yeah.
But it's still.
We were far behind for many.
For like when we made the first big jump. So that's why I was asking, yeah.
Was hovering at eighty for a long time and who's, I mean, yeah, that's.
I don't know if you have any questions for Kevin.
Nope. Um, you know, it's somewhat of a competitive market out there. As, uh, Dr. Liggett said, substitutes are at somewhat of a premium. Um, we're looking for the best people possible in the classrooms and the people with the, with the. Wherewithal, with the experience, with the commitment to provide the best instruction possible. So this will, uh. Really move us forward in our ability to do that.
And I also think it's like, you know, day forty-one doesn't mean all of a sudden you're doing twice the work. You've been doing all of that work all the way along. I, I think that's a good move.
I don't know. I think it aligns with the basis was trying to do too and increase that. And they've been successful this year in doing it. So I think it should be really good.
Yep.
Meditation approval.
Motion no proof. Long-term substitute rates.
One second.
Any further comments?
No. Good job.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck. Uh, the next item is, uh.
That discussion.
Discussion or investigation, if you remember, and propose executive session. Uh, before I do that, did want to say, I forgot during my chairman's report, we did put out a newsletter. Uh, with lots of information in it. I thank all the teachers and all the staff who helped us gather the data and. Hopefully it will be mailed out to all residents, not just people in the parent square. So. I just forgot to say that before.
Does Mike have the format for that? Send it out because Mike has the format.
I don't know. Uh, motion to go into executive session for the purpose as described.
So moved.
The second. All of them.
Aye.
Aye.
And we invite.
To invite.
Certainly.
You're gonna meet my office soon.
Yeah.
session.
Eight forty seven.
No, uh, you had to leave.
Oh, he's up.
Yeah, Kim, Kim seat, that's how things.
It's not so great.
It's absolutely beautiful.
Well, it's lovely for the last few weeks.
Yeah.
It was a maple compliment for you.
It's cool. I'm way back.
I'm really looking forward to those team minutes.
Everyone.
That is the point my door at that hour.
So, yeah, now I still need it for another time, another eleven years.
There you go.
I think we're back.
We're back.
Action on the investigation, or you know.
Uh, I move that the Board of Education and Regional School District thirteen conduct an investigation to the behavior of former board chair Lindsay Dahlheimer.
Second.
Uh, in terms of discussion, the board has carefully and thoughtfully discussed the pros and cons of an investigation. And a formal statement from the board will be in a letter, will be an outline of our reasons, will be sent out by the end of the week. Uh, we considered, one, the cost of investigation and actually how you would do it. Two, the fact that Lindsay has already stepped down as chair. And three, the need for the district to get back focused on students and learning and move forward. So those are our discussions and our recommendations. Any other discussion? If not, would you like to take a vote on the motion? So, we'll take it by personal. I'll start.
Linda. Uh, Linda Darcy, nay.
Chairman Owen, no.
Stan.
Uh, Warren, no.
Lucy Patralla, nay.
Jamie Rorback, no.
Warren Cameron, no.
Christine Cowan, no.
Thank you very much. You will have a letter of our reasons, uh, by Friday. Uh, now time for public comment.
Do you see anything online?
Any online public comment?
Um, through, I think I got picked off when I went into executive session. I don't know if anybody's online for public comment.
No, I just.
Second.
In terms of discussion, the board has carefully and thoughtfully discussed the pros and cons of an investigation. And a formal statement from the board will be in a letter, will be an outline of our reasons, will be sent out by the end of the week. We considered, one, the cost of investigation and actually how you would do it. Two, the fact that Lindsay has already stepped down as chair. And three, the need for the district to get back focused on students and learning and move forward. So those are our discussions and our recommendations. Any other discussion? If not, like to take a vote on the motion? So we'll take it by personal. I'll start. Linda?
Linda Darcy, nay.
Chairman Owen, no.
Stan?
Warren, no.
Lucy Patrow, nay.
Jamie Rorback, no.
Warren Cameron, no.
Christine Cowan, no.
Thank you very much. You will have a letter of our reasons by Friday. Now time for public comment.
We seem to have something online.
Any online public comment?
Drew, I think I got kicked off when I went into executive session. I don't know if anybody's online for public comment.
No.
I can't tell if you're getting it.
Good evening. I'd like to finish with something.
Is your name again?
Yep, my name is Craig Braden, either resident, parent of past president student district 13, teacher at Coggin shot high school, president of region 13 education association. I just wanted to say something positive tonight. On behalf of the teachers of region 13, I want to affirm what we all know to be true. We have incredible students, dedicated educators, and a community that is deeply committed to the success of our schools. Every day, our teachers and staff bring their expertise, passion, and care to the work of inspiring, challenging, and supporting our learners. We stand together, supporting one another and focusing on what matters most, which is creating a district where students thrive, staff feel value, and our entire community can celebrate the excellence we achieve together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie. Good evening. Julie Sass, Roughball. Probably should have written something down because I suffer horribly from, I wish I would have said that when I got home, itis. So I don't know, but I want to say I truly love our community. I really do. I love our, I love the small town feel. I love every school I have helped to work in, not officially, but volunteered in since Brewster, all the way up to, I love Strong and I don't, while we don't have as much going on at this school, I like feeding the staff here. I enjoy it. I enjoy working with the kids. I enjoy working at the fair. I enjoy all of that. And I think that one of the things that, you know, in listening to the meeting tonight over and over, it seems to hear like, well, we want to move forward and we want to show our common values and our core values with the community and build trust. And I think that's important. And I really, we're starting a new school year. And as much as I hate that that means the end of summer because winter sucks. But it means that I think we should think of the best way to go forward and build that new trust with the community and have us all working forward together. And so that we can be happy and feel that we are working for the good of what we are all meant to do. And I mean, you guys are all signed up to be here because you want to do what's best. And we elected you guys for that. So, you know, if your current bylaws don't allow for when problems happen and there is, you know, we were told last time, well, we can't, we can't have somebody leave because our bylaws don't allow that. Well, I've been on several groups that have bylaws. Maybe it's time to rewrite them. And so that situations like this, if they arise again, they can be fixed. It just, there needs to be a way to move forward. So as a group that these situations don't happen and we can build trust with the community and go forward and we can move on to other more important things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to provide a clarification for that? We talked about just clarification.
Yep.
I did want to clarify that the board can't change their bylaws to do that. It would have to be state law that changes. So I'm not saying that it couldn't happen, but it has to be from the state of Connecticut changing their laws about being an elected official. This board can't change that law.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, Christine Gerardi from Durham. I was just hoping that in this letter that you're sending out, if you can let us know if you're not doing the investigation, how you were able to tell that it was happening during the board of ed time? If you could just add that in the letter so that we have some clarification on that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
In the letter that you're sending out, if we, so we understand like why certain things were done as a board member? Like where if you're doing.
Got it, got it, got it. Yep.
Any other comments online? Seeing no more public comments, then we will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you for coming. And I'm excited to be back as a board chair.